Thank you for attending tonight's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. The agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. You may also follow along by connecting to the district's website at www.wcsho.org. Click on our district link then select Board of Education and then Board Doc's Agenda and select this evening's meeting. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 16.01, or 6.01. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 7.01 through 12.02. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 13.01. There is a sign up sheet located on the table in the back of the room, and each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. And with that, Mr. Griffith, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Carter?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Byrd?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, everyone, good evening. We will begin this evening's board meeting with a recognition and celebration of our summer graduates, and with that, the Board of Education will accept the class by calling the roll. Mr. Griffith?
Ms. Carter?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. Kellogg, will you please present the class?
It's my pleasure, Mr. Byrd. This exciting evening, we got a packed house. Whenever I have this many people at a board meeting, something good's going on, and we have a lot of family here with smiles and cameras, so I hope they enjoyed the cake and punch and a little bit of time before we got to recognize the graduates this evening. So, here we go with the official stuff. President Byrd and members of the Board of Education, distinguished former and current faculty and staff, honored guests, and proud families of the graduates of Central, North, and South High Schools. The State of Ohio establishes in all two requirements for earning a high school diploma. First is the successful completion of a rigorous academic curriculum, and the second is proficient competencies in five disciplines that compromise the Ohio graduation test. Ladies and gentlemen, seated before you are the young men and women who have now satisfied those requirements. The administration of Westerville City Schools has verified, and the Board of Education has unanimously approved their candidacy for graduation, and so it's with great pleasure as Superintendent of Westerville City Schools to do the thing I love most, that I confer to each semester graduate a Westerville City Schools State of Ohio Diploma of Completion. So at this time, to officiate the ceremony, I'd like to ask Mr. Reeves to the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Kellogg, President Byrd, members of the board. Today's always one of my favorite days, graduation, because it is the culmination of everything that we do with our young people, from the time they enter kindergarten as four, five, and six-year-olds until the time they now receive their diploma. And as exciting as it is to do that and celebrate with these young men and women today, it's more exciting to see what they will become in their life and how they will add to our community and our society, and so we're very thankful of that. And you can also see from the enormous amount of support here, moms, dads, grandparents, aunts, uncles, brothers, and sisters, that there are a lot of people who have supported these young people to get them to this point. And so with that, I'd like to personally offer my congratulations, as do the members of the board and our superintendent. And so what I would like to do at this point is I'm going to introduce Mr. Spinner, the Principal of Westerville Central High School, who will come up and say a few remarks. We do not have a central grad up here, but if I could invite the board and Dr. Kellogg to come up when he turns it over to Mr. Yancey, he will make a few remarks and we will present the diploma. So if you would join me up front, please.
Dr. Kellogg, President Byrd, Vice President Velardo, members of the board, family, friends, community, my name is Todd Spinner, and I am the Principal at Central High School. Would like to congratulate all of the Wildcats, Warriors, and Warhawks here this evening. Like Mr. Reeves said, my two students couldn't be with us here this evening, however, I spoke to them on the phone and relayed my congratulations to them early this morning. I'm also very proud of all of our graduates here tonight, and I would like to give them a quick quote from our founding father, President George Washington. President Washington said, "The things that we do here today, and those things that we do from here on out, will either positively or negatively impact those around us. We control our own destiny." So graduates, I encourage you to control your own destiny. Now it's my great privilege and pleasure to introduce Mr. Kurt Yancey, the Principal of Westerville North High School. Mr. Yancey?
My name is Kurt Yancey, and I am the Principal of Westerville North, as Mr. Spinner indicated. It is my pleasure to be able to publicly say congratulations to all of our graduates tonight, and to wish you luck with all that you do from here. On behalf of the entire Westerville North learning community and all the other district employees who have affected your lives, please accept our congratulations for your tremendous accomplishment. We are all very proud of the Westerville Central Warhawks, Westerville North Warriors, and Westerville South Wildcats who are becoming alumni this evening. And I encourage you to please continue to push yourself, to keep moving forward regardless of the obstacles that you may face or failures that you will endure from here. And remember, to treat the failures as an opportunity. They're an opportunity to grow, an opportunity to get better, and an opportunity that will teach you how to succeed. This is a great life lesson to take with you as you move on to your next adventure, and I wish you the best of luck in the future. Congratulations once again, and please know how proud all of us are for you, of you, for persevering and making it here tonight. Great work. And now it is my pleasure to introduce the four graduates from Westerville North High School who will now receive their diplomas. First, Mr. Kyle William Arnholdt.
And now it is my pleasure to turn the program over to the Westerville South High School Principal, Mr. Mike Starner.
Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be the new South High School Principal here in Westerville and to be surrounded by wonderful colleagues and tremendous leadership. I, in a past life, have also been a principal and attended summer graduations, and would certainly like to echo the thoughts of not only my colleagues here, but also Mr. Reeves. It is a special night. I remember going up to a graduate a few years ago to summer graduation and saying, I'll just call him Billy, maybe that was his name, but saying, you know, "I really admire your perseverance." And he said, "Thank you, Mr. Starner, that means so much to me, but what is perseverance?" And I said, "Well," I said, "let's just go with stick-with-tness." So on behalf of everybody here, I'd like to congratulate all graduates tonight for your stick-with-tness and your summer graduation, your diploma. I believe we have three, now four, graduates, and I have such a rich history with our graduates, forty-five minutes as new principal. Are you Ahmed? Okay. Get ready, you're leading off. So it's my pleasure to present our class from South High School, and we will start
At this time, I'll welcome Mr. Spinner back up to the podium.
Nope. So what we're going to do, if the graduates would stand, we're going to do the turn in the tassels, so if the graduates would stand, right, because you need this picture, right? Everybody got their tassel? I'm going to make sure we're ready to all go. All right, you may turn your tassels. You're now official graduates. Congratulations to all of you and your families. So we have another recognition coming up in a minute, but for our graduates and their families, I think, Lynn, we want to go ahead and dismiss them, and you can do pictures with them. Do you want to do that now, or you want to wait till after the?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have, so you guys are free to sit, and we have one more recognition, then we'll dismiss you, and we can do some pictures out front, and your families can, so just one more recognition to do before that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kellogg. It's my privilege to introduce the recognitions for National History Day, and at this time, I would just like to ask Deanna McDaniel to come forward.
Thank you very much. You guys should be forewarned, I am the original National History Day advertiser, so I think I have my script I wrote, so I wouldn't forget anybody or anything that I needed to say. So as I say each person's name, if they would stand, and then all at once we could come up and shake hands. Does that work? All right. "Good evening to Dr. Kellogg and our school board. I have to take advantage of having your attention tonight. Those of you who know me at all know that National History Day is near and dear to my heart. I am wearing my bearing teacher ambassador name tag tonight as I grab my chance to promote this wonderful program. I read the following to you from the Ohio History Day website. Ohio History Day is a free social studies program that meets all of the Ohio learning standards and engages students in a dynamic, creative, and rigorous learning process along the way. History Day students research and present exhibits, performances, websites, documentaries, and papers about a topic in history based on an annual theme. They learn lifelong and college and career readiness skills and have the opportunity to compete in regional, state, and national competitions. History Day is an excellent example of project-based learning and the C3 framework. As an aside, my students know that I just do it for fun. After students have made it past the school, regional, and state level, the top 1% make it to the national level. Yes, that's right. The top 1% make it to national competition. Nearly 3,000 students made it to the University of Maryland College Park this year for this week-long event. They came from all over the United States, Guam, American Samoa, Department of Defense schools in Europe, and affiliates in China, Korea, and Jakarta. I had the pleasure of sitting by the group from Singapore this year while watching a Nationals baseball game. Yes, it was National History Day night at the ballpark. For three years in a row, three years in a row, we have had students from this district attend national competition. I believe this speaks not only to the excellence of our students and their teachers, but also to the support this program gets, from the board, from Dr. Kellogg, and from our principals. So first is a thank you to all of you. Now to our students and their teachers. Antonia Mapes, who is not here because she had other commitments. Junior Individual Exhibit, Frederick Putnam, Excavating the Serpent Mound. Tammy Salzman and Pat Schertzinger, Teachers. Antonia deserves special recognition as her exhibit was chosen to represent Ohio at the National Museum of American History. All affiliates were represented at the night at the museum. Wow. Yes. Okay. Next, Kira Lemiris, Junior Individual Website, Viola Louiso. Lisa Lund, and Deanna McDaniel, Teachers. A general rule of thumb for me has always been that sixth graders don't make it to national competition, as it is their first year. But Kira's amazing website showed me that I just needed to change my thinking on that Last but not least is Emma Rennie. Junior Paper, Nellie Bly, Exploration and Encounter in the Field of Investigative Journalism. Deanna McDaniel, Teacher. This is the second year in a row that Emma has gone to national competition, and I hope she continues on at the high school level. My favorite story about Emma this year is that she broke her foot the night before state level competition, but we rounded up a wheelchair and she went and then moved on to Nationals. Way to go, Emma. That is a girl that does not give up. Emma placed 10th in the nation with her paper, and was also selected as the outstanding junior entry from Ohio. Thank you again to Dr. Kellogg, the school board, and our principals, and job well done
Okay, so at this time, we may allow the graduates, the family, the National History Day winners, and all others who would like to leave, although if you want to stay for the board meeting, you are certainly, yeah, okay, so you're leaving. Goodbye. For those remaining for the board meeting, we'll be resuming in just a minute after
Wow, look at this.
Our warship's going to be bedazzled. I've made that decision.
Or what is?
I want a scootin' neck, I don't like polos.
What's that?
I don't like polos, I like scootin'.
Me too, I'm with her.
With, you know, fake fur.
What about the hybrid polo scootin' neck?
Oh no, that could be interesting.
I prefer one that cuts forward.
Jesus.
Yeah.
Oh my God. I thought of you yesterday, guess what was on TV? Talladega Nights.
Do you even have to say it was?
Thank you, baby Jesus.
Good evening again, everyone. We'll go ahead and commence with the board meeting at this time. We'll move directly into Agenda Item 4, 4.01, which is the approval of the Minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on Monday, August the 8th, 2016, as read. A reminder to those watching and those in attendance, we do not pass a motion for the approval of minutes. We simply ask for questions, concerns, issues, or oversights, any amendments necessary, any questions. Hearing none, the board minutes are approved as read. Move to Agenda Item 5, 5.01, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Byrd, members of the board. Later this evening, the board have an opportunity to act on a resolution to approve what is being termed the Transition Win-Win Agreement, and I wanted to walk through some components with you this evening and touch on just a little bit of history for the audience and just for the record, and then I'll dive into this map a little bit for you, which is so easy to read in its current state, but we'll drill down deeper in a minute, just so you understand, you and the community have a full understanding of what this agreement's about. So, you know, thirty years ago, the suburban districts entered into this win-win agreement with Columbus City Schools at a time in which, well, we'll go back in history, because we're talking about a time period when there was one Westerville High School, one Hilliard High School, one Dublin High School, one Olentangie High School, there's still only one New Albany High School. And so it's a time period in which the conditions around Central Ohio and the suburbs were completely different than they are thirty years later today, and the development, the growth of the suburban districts, et cetera. And so in this last renewal period, which occurred this last May to June, there's a lot of discussion about the need to continue the agreement in its current condition, and hats off to Dan Good and the board and City Columbus, Columbus City Schools for taking the opportunity to take a step back and seeing if the current win-win fit with today's conditions. And I'm pleased to report here this evening that we have a resolution in front of you that will change the complexion of what win-win looks like moving forward. You may also know in past history, one of the school districts, Reynoldsburg, exited the win-win agreement a number of years ago, and that's been cited by folks for a long, long time period. Should be noted that time, the amount of property that Reynoldsburg was protecting was fairly minimal. We're talking about about a $25,000 deal, wasn't as large as what we're engaged in in our win-win. You may also have followed the news in that recently Dublin, in particular, negotiated a different deal. There's involved change in payments, and they transferred some property, or potential transfer of property, I should say. Groveport also entered into a different agreement that changed the structure of their payments to Columbus. And this evening, Southwestern City Schools Board of Education, here indicating that they want to reopen the agreement. So it basically transitions us out of the current win-win agreement. People may have questions about, well, what about the six-year agreement? Essentially, in talking to the attorneys that helped us all frame this, we're using the term "transition" because the current six-year agreement is there. This amends it, and we transition to it as the other agreement falls off in six years. So some technical pieces in there. So that's the specifics. What I do want to make sure everybody's a full understanding of is, what does it mean to say our boundaries are protected? And this is where a lot of the public confusion over what win-win says and what it does starts, can start to get in the mix. So I want to clarify. Under win-win, there are really two types of property we're talking about. There's property that years ago was annexed by the City of Columbus, City of Columbus, but not annexed by Columbus City Schools. And at that time period, you could do that. So what happened was Columbus took township property, City of Columbus took township property, but the school district did not annex that property. So those students who had been, those families, those territories that had been attending Westerville Schools continued to attend Westerville City Schools. And the payments we've been making over the years has protected those boundaries as they are, so that City of Columbus Schools couldn't come in and annex those properties. There's a second set of properties that are described in Section 8 of the win-win agreement. These are properties that are current township properties. Blended Township, I'll show you some examples, is the most prevalent in that, that have not been annexed by City of Columbus, so it's still blended township, and they come to Westerville City Schools. Under the current win-win agreement, if those properties were to be annexed by City of Columbus, Water and Sewers, what we're talking about, Development and Water and Sewer, those properties under the current win-win agreement would transfer automatically to Columbus City Schools. So those families who reside in those properties, if they were annexed, would leave Westerville and go to Columbus City Schools. Under the agreement that's in front of you tonight in the resolution, that's the most significant change. When I say we protect our boundaries, we solidify our boundaries, in that those properties, if they are annexed by City of Columbus in the future, will remain Westerville City School students. And I think that's a significant point of difference between the current arrangement. What it effectively means is, from a financial standpoint, and Bart can talk about this, we're locking down our property valuation, which is where the bulk of our revenue comes from. And if City of Columbus was to annex those territories, they don't automatically annex to Columbus City Schools, and we lose revenue. And as we know, that generates about $30 million of our property tax, the win-win territories. But I do want to show you, and Jill, this map is kind of hard to follow, but I've looked at enough, so I know. There is, turn the pointer on, John. So Jill's blowing up the property, and for the audience, I'm going to show you the area I'm looking at.
See, I have a reference point. This is Hoover Reservoir, and the property I'm going to reference in my comments up here refers to this part over here that's blended township. So if you look at that territory, that's the area I'm talking about, because that's the most significant piece of territory in this agreement.
So on this map, and it's hard to see from where you're at, there are vertical lines that go up and down. Let me back up. The colors are coded by school districts. All the pinkish-red is Westerville City Schools territory. The yellow to the upper left is Olentangie, and you can start to figure it out. The light blue to the mid-left is Worthington. Upper right purple is Big Walnut. Mid-right, light blue is New Albany. And mixed in there is some brownish area, which is Columbus City Schools. This, a lot of people know, this is a very cut-up portion, a mix of Columbus City Schools, New Albany Schools, next to Westerville City Schools. So this area over here on that east quadrant is very cut-up. And then south down here to Little Turtle and 270 and 161 is the territory I'm looking at. So there's a big portion of land in here along the eastern bank of Hoover Reservoir. South of the bridge, all the names, thank you, Smothers. South of Smothers, and then there's a road that runs north-south here, Shaw, I think it is. I may have that wrong. And that, all that property's all blended township. And as you notice, it's blended township, it's not been incorporated. It's also a buts property that has been annexed by City of Columbus, and in some cases, Columbus City Schools. Right? So that's the property that, when I refer to those properties that have not been annexed, township properties, which have not been annexed by City of Columbus, which could be. In the past, this property over here, which currently is Westerville City Schools, blended township, if it was annexed by City of Columbus in the old agreement, all that would have gone to Columbus City Schools. All the houses there that exist now in any development. Under the new agreement, that territory's protected, as are some other small pockets like that, pocketed throughout the district. But that's the biggest piece. Under the new agreement, if it's annexed by City of Columbus, it stays Westerville City Schools. So our property values are protected, and the homeowners there now know that unless both boards agree to reopen the resolution and want to renegotiate it, that stays Westerville City Schools. There are other small pockets like that. I'll give you a great example, and I think, I think I have this accurately. You may recall the MI subdivision in Minerva Park at the golf course. That golf course property had to be purchased and then annexed by Minerva, Village of Minerva, into it before it could be developed. And that, so that protected as part of Minerva Park. So that no longer is there. There is a apartment complex that went up on the southeast quadrant of the 161 Sunberry area, which went up within the last year. That is Columbus City Schools, Columbus City. That's part of chopped-up territory. It's kind of follows suit. There are a couple other little pockets of what's called undeveloped territory. These would be township properties, small parcels that could be subject to Columbus City, City of Columbus annexation, and in the past would have become Columbus City School students, now will remain Westerville City School students as they are today. So those are the changes. So our boundaries as they exist today are locked down. The payments are reduced. I'll let Bart hit on the finances. There is no difference between whether or not you are Westerville City Schools now and a territory that's been annexed or not. You'll stay with us. So I'll let Bart maybe hit on some of the financial parts of that.
Really, the only thing that changed financially, you know, that area was worth about $30 million to Westerville City Schools, so that'll remain with us. And like John said, in the past, if they would have built a housing development in and that property left, we lost the valuation of all that property with it as well. Currently, if they build in there and they build homes or whatever they build, that property will now stay with us. And by law, anybody that's part of Westerville City Schools all pay the same taxes as Westerville City Schools. So now when the property is, if it's built, they'll just pick up right where everybody else is part of Westerville City Schools. They pay the same millages that everybody else pays. So it does lock in the boundaries and it does lock in so that we don't lose any money in the future. Okay? And when you talk about the 500, we typically, I use the number 500,000. I think the last payment was 494. But if you just stay with 500,000, the way it is, it's 100%. We'll pay for the 500,000 in May of 2017 under the first year of the contract. Next year drops to 400,000, then 300,000, then 200, 100, and this. So in essence, it's going to be a million and a half dollars. The original agreement would have been $3 million. So in essence, when we do our five-year forecast, we'll make that change to reflect that smaller savings throughout the next four years of the forecast, because it doesn't cover all six years. But we'll reflect that in the forecast as well. So over the course of the next six years, we're going to pay less and less each year to the point where we pay zero, but the cumulative value is 1 and 1/2 million dollars versus three. Okay?
So I hope I covered it adequately. Appreciate the support we had during all this. I know there's a lot of attention to it. I'm excited to be in this position, so if you have questions, we'd be happy to take them.
I would say hallelujah. I mean, thank goodness for the kids and the parents, especially in that win-win area for stability. We thank you both for working very hard on this and the team behind you. And I think this, you know, in the long run, helps us even financially. So for all the taxpayers of this district, this is great, wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I think this is a really good opportunity, not just to stabilize the boundaries of the district and attendance, population of students, but also for our long-term financial stability. I think it's going to be really helpful.
I've spent a lot of years defending our boundaries, and I am so happy to see this occur. Finally, the boundaries are secure. The boundaries are stable. The families that have gone to Westerville City Schools will continue to go to Westerville City Schools. They need not fear. The families that do not attend Westerville City Schools will remain in the districts where they are attending. Like, I can't imagine they would fear. But our boundaries are where we have needed them to be. For decades, the boundary wars ruled so much of what went on in this part of the state. Win-win tamped down that fire. By the time win-win came along, we had lost huge swaths of our original territory when Westerville City Schools was created. And through win-win, we were able to stabilize that to the best of the ability at the time. And as win-win went on through the decades, there were adjustments to it, and you can begin to see, as you look back at win-win's history, the progression to this point. One of the really important things about this particular negotiation is that this amendment to win-win was locally negotiated, with local districts, local superintendents paying close attention to local needs. I give you a lot of credit, John, for the role that you played in this negotiation. That is something that I hope you're very proud of. You should be, because this is a happy day for Westerville City Schools, financially, educationally, legally, in all ways. Thank you.
Yeah, just real quickly, here, lock the boundaries, keep the money, keep the kids, and move into education. That's really, that's really what we're trying to do here. When I was running for school board, this is a true story, because all my other stories are not true. This is a true story. When I was running for school board, handed a leaflet, the very first house I visited, opened up the door, gave the leaflet, running for school board, Rick Velardo, blah, blah, blah. He said, and I almost quote, "What the blank are you going to do about win-win?" And I said, "Well, you don't like win-win, do you?" He said, "No." I said, "We're going to kill it." And then I needed to go back and study what win-win was and try to figure, okay, this is what win-win's all about. And so, no, I knew what it was. Here's, I'm, I am really grateful to these folks for working hard on this. It was really, it was really hard work at times to try and figure out how we can do this. And I, too, want to give a shout to the Columbus Board of Education.
Yes.
Because, you know, they're, they're not flush with cash. They're trying to figure things out as well. And to Dan, former here, and superintendent down there, good, we're moving it forward. I, my, my deal is, and always has been, I think we've always just said, it's just lock the boundaries as-is, keep the kids as-is, save some money down the road. So we've done, feel really good about it. Thank you for the hard work that this whole team has done. And now let's just get back in the classroom.
Thank you, and everyone on the board, and definitely thank you, Dr. Kellogg and the administration. I've had, in the course of my time on the board, I've had an opportunity to be directly engaged and sit near the heat on a couple of different items. Point View being one, and Minerva Park being another. And I'm extremely proud of our work as a team in those spaces. But I am really humbled by this development. Look, if you're on the school board, just a bit of advice, you've got to be prepared to take slings and arrows and a couple of beatings. And there were quite a few in this cycle. Representative Duffy, much respect to him, he stepped into the midst of an issue that had much broader reach than just Worthington. He addressed the issue as it related specifically to Worthington and his constituency, and each one of the suburban districts had a different variation of what our issues were. And they weren't similar to Worthington. Representative Duffy and I had those conversations. And again, much respect to him for bringing the issue to the fore. But the challenge that we faced as a board is, we received significant communication from a small minority in the community that we were doing nothing, that we were complacent. I believe I received a couple that we were incompetent, which was odd, because we had been in negotiations for months by that point. And those discussions had been already occurring. And those exchanges and those conversations and letters with Dr. Good had already been in flight. And you learn to grow a little bit of a thick skin to work through those processes, because you know at the end, there's a great outcome that's there, if you're willing to work for it. Big, big kudos and accolades to City of Columbus. I agree with you, Rick. Not a win for them in the long term, as it relates to basic economics, but definitely a win-win for all of us as it relates to establishing, securing, and managing our boundaries. Right? And frankly, is a win for us in establishing what I had stated a number of times, both in session as well as to members of the state legislature. The reality is, is that win-win came about because of an archaic series of laws that were based in the township structure that go all the way back to the founding of Ohio. Every township had a school. That's the way that it worked. And when townships began to look at their schools and go, "Westerville's getting bigger, blended. It makes sense for us to incorporate our schools into their school." That's how this whole process began. And we've not addressed the issues related to these archaic laws that we have around municipalities and townships and how those are structured. And the challenge has been that kids have paid the price. From Cleveland to Cincinnati to Columbus, kids have paid the price because of these old laws that aren't addressed. So I would encourage the state legislature to definitely address those. But I am happy that the true issue is resolved. This is a home rule issue for school districts, and I am very happy that this accord gets us to a point that if we make changes, we do what we should have been doing all along. We negotiate it as districts amongst each other, and we approve it as elected representatives within those school boards. That's the way that it should be. I cannot say I could be happier. I am ecstatic about this outcome, and I am glad that we put in the hard work to get this done. So thank you much to everybody, and thank you again to City of Columbus School District. That being said, any additional questions, issues, or concerns? Excellent. We'll move on to the next agenda topic. Public comments, 6.01. This evening, I believe, we have none, none registered at this point. And we move to 7.01, resolution to approve the financial reports and investments, June 2016 and July 2016. The financial report lists all funding And we've not addressed the issues related to these archaic laws that we have around municipalities and townships and how those are structured. And the challenge has been that kids have paid the price. From Cleveland to Cincinnati to Columbus, kids have paid the price because of these old laws that aren't addressed. So I would encourage the state legislature to definitely address those. But I am happy that the true issue is resolved. This is a home rule issue for school districts. And I am very happy that this accord gets us to a point that if we make changes, we do what we should have been doing all along. We negotiate it as districts amongst each other, and we approve it as elected representatives within those school boards. That's the way that it should be. I cannot say I could be happier. I am ecstatic about this outcome. And I am glad that we put in the hard work to get this done. So thank you much to everybody. And thank you again to the city of Columbus School District. That being said, any additional questions, issues, or concerns? Excellent. We'll move on to the next agenda topic. Public comments, 6.01. This evening, I believe, we have none, none registered at this point. And we move to 7.01, resolution to approve the financial reports and investments, June 2016 and July 2016. The financial report lists all funding funds ending in June 2016 and July 2016. May I ask for a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Bart?
Mr. President, members of board, do these two separately. June 30th, 2016 was the end of fiscal year 16. I'll give you those numbers first. The year-to-date receipts ended up being $171.9 million. The year-to-date expenditures was $155.2 million. We had an unencumbered general fund balance of $76.9 million for all funds ending June 30th, 2016. The year-to-date receipts was $228.3 million. Year-to-date expenditures were $212.5 million. And the unencumbered fund balance for all funds was $96,389,753. That was for June. For the financials for July, which is the first month of fiscal year 17, year-to-date receipts was $27,793,000. Year-to-date expenditures were $12,364,000. We have an unencumbered general fund balance of $76,666,000. Year-to-date receipts for all funds for fiscal year 17 is $27,542,000. Year-to-date expenditures were $14,769,000. We have an unencumbered fund balance for all funds, $96,842,000. That's the two reports.
Any questions?
No.
Hearing no questions at this time. Bart, will you call the roll?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes. Next, we move to agenda item 7.02, resolution to appoint a delegate and alternate delegate to the 2016 Annual School Boards Association Business Meeting. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And before we...
Just, just briefly, this is an annual event that we do every year. This board has to, has to basically select an, a alternate and a delegate which will represent the, all of Ohio's school boards. You're representing this board, but you will meet at the Ohio Association of School, excuse me, the Ohio School Board Association in November to discuss the businesses of Ohio, the business of school district. This is just an annual event that we do every year to get ready for that meeting where we basically have somebody represents the board as a delegate and somebody as an, as an alternate. And that's what this is for tonight.
So do we need an amendment with someone's name?
Well, I was just going to say, if, if there is a unanimous selection, there should not be a need for a motion for a contested vote.
It doesn't have to be. We did a motion in a second just because in the past, I thought somebody had talked about Ms. Cotter being delegate and Mrs. Davidson being alternate. It doesn't require a vote.
Right.
But we did it that way just so that we, we had an official record.
I believe unless they want to duke it out and go, go for a vote, if they both agree, we can pass the resolution as...
They agree, call it now.
There we go. Bart, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes. I would have preferred to see an arm wrestling match.
Okay, so guess where the meeting is this year? Where we get to go?
Vegas?
Fiji?
Oh, excellent.
No, it isn't.
Nice try.
I know. Downtown Columbus, baby.
Right. And also, just...
It's just like Fiji.
It is, it is in Columbus. I think it's November, what, 9th, 10th, or somewhere in there. Also, before we, just in my portion of it, I need a correction on 12.01 where it says Metropolitan Education Council, that's, it used to be MEC, that's now Meta. Remember, they, they purchased, so just a name change instead of MEC, Metropolitan Education Council, just change it to META, Meta?
Yeah.
Because they're one group now.
Okay.
So, when you get there.
All right. Excellent. Make sure you remind me. All right. We will move on to agenda item eight, personnel consent agenda for August 22nd, 22nd of 2016. Agenda items 8.01 through 8.09. Before I call for a motion, may I ask if there is a need for an exclusion? None at this time. So may I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Good evening, Laura.
Good evening, President Byrd, members of the board. Tonight's consent agenda contains nine sections involving 135 persons. Section 8.01 is the resignation of 12 classified employees and 14 substitutes. 8.02 is the resignation of one licensed supplemental contract. 8.03 is the retirement of one teacher. 8.04 is leave of absence for two teachers. 8.05 is contractual status change for two classified employees. 8.06 is a change of assignment for two classified employees and four temporary changes of assignment. 8.07 is one-time payments for 30 teachers. 8.08 is the employment of 32 classified employees and eight substitutes. And 8.09 is the employment of three teachers, one intern, 15 supplemental contracts, licensed supplemental contracts, 12 outside supplemental contracts, and there are eight corrections and adjustments to previously approved supplemental contracts. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Hearing none. Bart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes. Thank you very much. Next agenda item is 9.01, a final reading of policy 3220, staff evaluation. This policy is being revised to align with recent legislative changes and new requirements for school counselor evaluations. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Upon second and final reading, has anyone developed any questions, concerns, or issues?
Uh-uh.
Hearing none. Bart, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes. Moving to agenda item 10.01, recommended action for old business, we have none this evening. 11.01, recommended action for new business, we have none this evening. 12.01, resolution to participate and authorize the Metropolitan Education...
Meta.
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 To advertise and receive bids for school buses. There we go. Motion to approve a resolution to participate and authorize the Meta Solutions to advertise and receive bids for school buses. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Bart, do you have a read on this?
Mr. Dawson?
Excellent. Didn't see you back there. I was like, I knew it had to be one of the transportation guys.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. The resolution before you is requesting to participate in the authorized Meta Solutions, which is, was formerly known as MEC, to advertise and receive bus bids for school buses on behalf with us as long as 38 other districts. We're scheduled to replace nine in this upcoming year. Our district is part of, it's part of our capital improvement, participating districts to receive bids from Meta October 28th. So we should receive them back. It's usually a pretty good schedule, so next year, we'll receive them prior to the school year. So we'll receive them in June. Participating districts will not be charged for this, any of these advertising fees. Resolution does obli, does not obligate us to purchase buses. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve Westerville Schools' participation of Meta co-op bus purchase program. Is there any questions at this time?
I hear no questions. Nicely done, much appreciated. Hearing no questions. Bart, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes. We move to agenda item 12.02, resolution to approve, a motion for resolution to approve bilateral agreement between Boards of Education of the Columbus City School District and the Westerville City School District. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further comment relative to the bilateral agreement? Before I call roll, I will quickly state that I am extremely enthusiastic that this board and the people of Westerville that we represent, when we consider that at the end of the six-year expiry of the current contract and the years that it took to negotiate the original, that we are stepping away from a decision that has four decades in place. And this is a big deal. And I am very, very proud of our community for supporting us as we've managed through this and reached this conclusion. That being said, Bart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes. Wow. That actually felt really good.
It did.
All right. Move to agenda item 13.01, public comments. We have no public comments registered this evening or no citizens registered for public comments. We move to 14.01, board comments. Who would like to start tonight?
Very quickly, Fourth Friday is coming up, because Fourth Friday is coming. Look at your calendar, very important. I'd like to point out that our superintendent will be...
Mr. Byrd.
Mr. Byrd will be a part of a dunking booth in which if you pay money, you hold them underwater for, it's a minute for a dollar. Is that what it is?
I can stand up for 13 minutes.
So a part of a dunking booth. Would love to see everybody turn out and have a lot of fun with that. I think that's very exciting. And the money goes to...
Boy Scouts.
Boy Scouts, which is always...
Just a reminder, I have influence on whose teacher, who, what children get what teachers and what homework they get. So I think that through before you throw a ball at that thing and send me to the water.
I understand that. And for any parents who, who would like to still throw a ball, just, just reminder that the board does have the hiring and superintendent, you know, we, so anyway, go out and have a lot of fun with that. That's exciting. And really, just, just a big shout out to the graduates. We are looking forward to hearing from you all down the road. Just a big congratulation to some unbelievably strong History Day participation once again in this district. For those of you that don't know, Westerville really is well-represented in that, and we are proud to support that. And for all the teachers and administrators that are behind the scenes, doing a lot of extra work, thank you for, for going above and beyond, truly. That, that is, some of these awards that these kids get will be the highlight, one of the absolute highlights of their education. When you go to something like a national competition, that is tremendous. And that's really, just wanted to highlight those few things. Thank you.
I don't have much to say except, isn't this a great evening? We had a wonderful start to school. We have kicked the new school year off. Thank you to the teachers. Thank you to all the classified staff. Thank you to everyone who is engaged in getting the school year started, all of our central office people. This was one of the smoothest starts I can recall. Congratulations to everyone. And it's just a very exciting night with National History Day, with the graduation, with the win-win amendment, and with a wonderful district moving on excellent paths. What a great place to be.
Well, I'll echo Dr. Nestor Baker's comments. The great start to a school year. And, and again, emphasize, excellent start on behalf of our teachers. Just, I'm actually stuttering a lit, a little bit under the weight of, of tonight's meeting and all the activity of the summer. We, we got Point View open and done. We have, if you've not gone down by Hawthorne, we have a great landscaped traverse and cut through now that, that was all completed in time for school. We've had just so many things going on. And obviously, win-win is, is a historic moment for our community. And, and it's, it's really cool. I don't know how else to say it, but it's just really cool. And, you know, I get to cap tonight off by, by making some brief comments about a process that we go through each year as a board, which is our evaluation of our superintendent and our treasurer. And much like any other board, we hold our executives accountable for performance. And this year, to me, is, is really a special year in terms of these conversations that we had. Because in these conversations and during this evaluation period, we were no longer talking about restoring or returning. We were no longer talking about only one year, only two years in seat. We were talking about, you know, a foundation of strength with a superintendent and treasurer in seat. And, and much of the flavor and tone and culture of the school district, from the administrative staff to the teachers, is now truly in their hands. And, and we see the, the outcomes of that on almost a daily basis. We're seeing administrators stepping into roles and innovating in a way that, that I've not seen in my time in the school district. And we're seeing use of resources, and we're seeing operating reserves, and we're seeing, you know, no additional tax levies coming, you know, through because of the hard work of, of the leaders in this district. The point that I wanted to make this evening in particular about Dr. Kellogg is that in the course of the conversations relative to the evaluation, at some point, like all good job evaluations, we get down to a discussion about money. And what I find interesting, I want to quickly frame this. We have a, an executive leader in this district that, that asked us to work with him to make what amounts to an extremely long-term commitment to the district in the, in the form of his five-year contract. He wants to be here. He is a servant leader. He is on the floor, on the ground, at the playground, at the building site. He is with the teachers. He, I've been in events and we've, you know, we've seen how the district is responding from citizens to students to teachers to staff. And I think that that's worth us compensating. And, and yet, even with that, the, the reality of, of Dr. Kellogg's servant leadership comes through. As we discussed, the process of compensation this year, Dr. Kellogg and the board agreed to a 2% increase, which is in line with the administrative staff and is intentionally so. And I believe that that speaks volumes about our superintendent. I believe that speaks volumes about our district and our strength, and I believe it speaks volumes about the servant leader that is, that is the CEO of our school. So, Dr. Kellogg, thank you so much. I am not looking back on the last couple of years. I'm looking forward to the next several years with you and very excited. And Bart, thank you for what you've done for the district in terms of, of the fiscal control, the transparency awards, and everything that you've made happen. Tracy?
You know, I think we should add one thing.
Please.
Just to remind the community that in his contract, it said 3%.
Oh, absolutely.
So he came in and said he wanted to do the same as the teachers and the administrators.
Yeah.
And we, we appreciate you.
Yeah.
And we're going to work you hard.
I'm actually glad that you brought that point up because it's very easy to just tell you servant leadership without this, without just being clear about that fact, right? The contractual agreement was 3%. Dr. Kellogg came to us and asked us for 2%. If that is not, first of all, that, again, that model of servant leadership and fiscal responsibility, I don't know what is. So again, thank you so much, Dr. Kellogg. I am looking forward to the next several years working with you. I believe my fellow board members probably are of the same opinion. All right. That being said, once again, my thanks to the Westerville community. Our citizens have continued on a daily basis to show us outward support in a way that I, I just find incredibly humbling and am extremely thankful for. And, and I get the double whammy because... And, and I get the double whammy, because as most people know, my long-term involvement with Boy Scouts, I'm going to have Boy Scouts gun in for me, and I'm going to have people gun in for me, because I'm on the school district, our school board. So, I'm planning on being wet, you know, for a half hour continuously. That being said, any additional questions, comments, or issues?
What times will you be in the booth?
Uh, 6:30, I think, is...
Yeah, I'm 6:30.
Are you 6?
I'm 1st.
Yeah, I think you're 6. I think I'm 6:30.
Okay.
I get fresh water.
You know, that's important.
I'm in the booth, I'm in the booth at 10:30 PM.
Are you serious?
No, no.
I think we're, I think we're 6 and 6:30, so we're 1 and 2 in line.
I will see you there.
Bring your, bring your arm, bring your, yeah. No practicing.
I'm going to bring a whole bunch of people in arms.
I think my wife's handing out dollar bills to people. I think my son's bringing the Autobahn cross-country team, it's going to be bad.
Well, I would, as a reminder, these Fourth Fridays are always a little bit challenging. Let's remember that this is also Football Friday Night coming up, and that tends to put a lot of traffic, you know, around, around the schools and, and around Uptown, on top of Fourth Friday. So let's make sure that we're safe and conscious.
We have time to get dry before you go to Football Friday Night. This is not a problem.
We, South opens at home against Sayota. North opens at home with a new coach against Groveport. And Central travels to Gehanna. Big, big opener. So, looking forward to very successful campaigns from those in all of our fall sports teams.
Excellent. All right. Hearing no additional comments, I will call out the next dates, times, and locations of our next meetings. The board will meet in regular session on Monday, September the 12th, 2016, and on Monday, September 26th, 2016, at 6:00 PM in the board training room at the Early Learning Center, 936 East Wind Drive. With that, I would like to call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Bart, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes. We are adjourned.[1786.69][1786.69]